Nice, like that's literally what she said and she was.
Jody, can you hear me?
Yeah, she can.
Okay.
Hi.
Looks like the council room is empty. Oh, there's one person there.
I was here for Parks and Trails here, so I figured I'd stick around.
Yeah, okay, well, that's one way to do it. You're not very loud, though. Is that better? A little better.
Okay. I'll just turn it off and be quiet about that.
So I guess we're waiting for who? Carrie? Who are we missing?
Maybe Janet.
Oh, Janet, that's right. Okay. Thanks, Doral.
She's at some event. I don't know if she'll be right on with this.
All right, well, we'll give her a couple of minutes and then I guess we'll get started.
That's Janet, Mayor.
I'm not sure who that is.
That's Janet.
Oh, hey. All right, anybody know Carrie's status? I guess she's been at this long enough. She probably knows the budget backwards and forwards. All right, well, Chris, if you're ready, we'll call this meeting to order and turn the time over to you. I here again, this is, uh, this is somewhat new to me, so I'm assuming that that's all that I'm expected to do, so that's what I'm gonna do.
Yes, can you guys hear me? Okay?
I can.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
This is really just kind of a relaxing, no votes taken, just a very super high level look at a complex little budget that we have within the city of Within Hills. And just gonna take a look at a few things and it's right there on the screen that I've got now is just a simplistic pie chart. This is the original budget that was voted on by the council last April, May. These were the projected revenues. Now, as we go through the budget tonight, you'll see that some of these percentages and numbers will change just because we're receiving some more monies than we had anticipated, but just for giggle sakes, just to look at the general account, you can see that our property taxes are making up nearly fifty percent of our revenue for our city. So it's, we are, you know, veteran community and it's mostly coming out of everybody's pockets, the property owners' pockets. The next biggest one is gonna be taking money out of the savings account this particular year. So we're taking about sixteen percent of our money out of savings account this year. The next big portion is our share of sales tax revenues within the state of Utah, so about eleven percent. Charges for services, these, whether these are for engineering, building permits, fire services, anything like that, is about eight percent. Classy road funds that we get from the state for gas tax is about five percent, and so is the utility tax, which we have a utility tax on cell phones, landline phones, gas, like Dominion and Strawberry Electric Service District, SESD. And then we got some miscellaneous permits and building permits, excuse me, um, business licenses and those kinds of things. So that is basically our revenues in the city of Within Hills. It has not changed very much over the past probably fifteen to eighteen years that I've been doing this. It's always stayed just about the same. This is where we're getting our money from. If we look at our expense portion, thirty-five percent of it goes in general government, and we'll talk about this in a second. A lot of that's gonna deal with salaries of just, and just basic necessities, basic needs of running the city of Within Hills. Then almost the same amount, thirty-four percent, goes into our roads and roads, snow plowing, repairs, those kinds of things. Snow plowing is about eight percent of our budget. That varies from year to year greatly. This year it's gonna be higher than last year. Fire EMS takes about seven percent as well as police and sanitation, that's garbage collection, which is kind of an in and out anyways, that's six percent, and then parks and animal controller are very minimal. That's the general account. Okay, then we're gonna talk about the water account. Water account, the revenue mainly from water revenues, people using the, you know, our water bills every, every month is obviously the majority of our money, and then the expenses. Just to keep the operating system up and running, plus some of the things we're doing this year with the repairs and maintenance. And then we're putting about a hundred and ten thousand dollars away this year into the savings account for future use. Now, we have dipped into that savings account over the past two years to get some of these road, excuse me, some of these water line repairs. We had to come up with about three hundred thousand dollars initially when we got the three million dollar note from the Department of the Water Services Department of the state of Utah. But we had it in savings. We had plenty of money in there, and it was good that we've been saving up for, for a while. Okay. So let's just jump right into the the budget in and of itself. So I'm gonna switch screens here and and all of you guys should have received this email. This is the November financials. You should have received this a couple of weeks ago. Well, it's like on January eleventh. It, within the city, we, we get the financials to the city council members and mayor. We try and get it in around the twentieth of each month. We've been doing some trainings and switching around, and so it's kind of come a little bit later, but the goal is to get it to you guys the twentieth of the month. So by about January twentieth of this month, you should have December's financials. It just takes that long to get credit card bills in and some of the other things in from the banks to be able to input this into the system sufficiently. So one of the most important things that you guys can look at when, when you get these financials is the actual financial statements. And let me pull that in here. And within our financial statements, actually within the budget of Within Hills and a lot of different cities, you've got a general account. You've got a capital projects account, and then you've got your enterprise accounts. Our enterprise accounts are the accounts that can make profit. So in Within Hills, we have water. Spanish Fork, they might have water and cable and electric and blah, blah, blah. You know, it goes down and down. More, more services that the cities can provide. Within the general fund, that's pretty basic. It's taxation and it gets spent on services within the city. The capital projects also can come from taxation. It can come from loans. And within the capital projects account, we may have several different capital projects going on at one time. So for example, we've got a roads capital project that deals with road replacement and road repairs. We've got a fire savings account, so we're saving up for the new fire truck. We've got an EMS one. We're saving up for an ambulance, a new EMS equipment. We've got a snowplow capital projects saving up for new snowplow trucks because we've got two brand new beautiful trucks, but they're gonna get beat and they're gonna need to be replaced in four to six years. Then within the water account, we've got the basic water account, and then we've got the sewer account. The sewer account is mostly in and out. No pun intended. It just goes, we collect the money and then we send it over to Payson and Payson takes care of it. You know, all the waste in the sewer. Within this budget here of the general fund, so general fund is typically delineated by what's called just a pen. I don't know if it really means much. General fund, and then it'll usually say what the date range is. One of the other things that has been kind of nice for council members, you can look, okay, forty-one point six seven of the fiscal year has expired. So if you really wanna see what's going on, you can quickly go down the right column and say, okay, forty-one point six seven of the year dawned. Holy cow, we've only got six point three eight percent of our property taxes collected. Well, instantly, you know, your property taxes aren't due till November thirtieth, so that's gonna be low until the property taxes are collected. When you get December and Januaries, that's gonna shoot right on up, so that'll be closer to the seventy-five to ninety percent. But you can kind of just go down the right-hand column for just a quick glance and see, oh, look, our business licenses. Well, we've, we've collected way more in business licenses this year than initially anticipated. So during the year, the council looks at the budget once or twice and makes necessary adjustments within the budget. Once again, this is the revenue portion of the general account. So taxation, that is our biggest collection and our biggest portion of revenues, how we can keep the city running. Not only is it current property taxes, but prior year's property taxes of people that are delinquent, they can go up to four years before tax sale. However, if they get to like year three and decide to pay one year off, that goes to the most current. So they're always, they gotta we as citizens and citizens of Within Hills has got to keep your property taxes pretty much up to date, or there could be a tax sale. We've talked about, uh, what the motor vehicle tax. There's been in years past, it has been said that if we buy a car like in Santa Quin, or we buy a car in Spanish Fork, to make sure you say that the car is registered in Within Hills. I spoke with the Utah Tax Commission last year and they said that the guy's been there about five years and he says, I've never heard of that. Doesn't mean it wasn't before, but if you buy a car in Spanish Fork, Spanish Fork gets the sales tax, their portion of sales tax. I'm not quite sure if you buy a car from Carvana and it ends up in Within Hills. I would suspect that Within Hills would see the lion's share of that, that tax at that point. Sales tax and use tax. During COVID, this actually went up for us. We collected more money in sales tax because Governor Herbert, back when he was in, um, as the governor, placed a tax on online sales, Amazon, Walmarts and those kind of things. And during COVID and just the nature of our city, we have a lot of Amazon and a lot of mail revenues or, um, sales, which means we receive a higher sales tax because those people are spending money paying sales tax within the city. Transportation tax, that's a new tax that came about three years ago from the county, receive a super small portion of some transportation taxing has to do with busing. We get it just as a windfall and a default, we get about eighteen thousand a year. And then franchise tax, this is what's on people's electric bills and gas bills from Dominion. It's about six points or six percent of their bill that goes to tax, and the same with the cell phones and landline. Very little landline collection anymore, just because cell phones are, are, um, the prominent source of communication. I'm gonna pause for a second. Let's talk about these columns up here. It's kind of important to look at. So there are many things that this budget is set up that is default, the way the state of Utah has and requests that these are given to city council members. Now, we actually go above and beyond. We give a more detailed budget every single month. Technically, a city of our size only needs to do it quarterly, but it's been a better protection by giving the city council everything. So it's just not the director of finance or the treasurer that are doing most of the find, uh, the ins and outs of the, the accounting. We also have a financial committee, three individuals plus David Pratt that sit on it. That's a very good resource for the citizens and, and for the council. You know, hey, we got this project coming up. Would you guys take a look at it, see if you can find better ways to save? Is this a good use of our money, et cetera? That's how we got the snowplow trucks. They did kind of an in-depth look at the snowplow trucks. They did that with a camera system that's coming and so forth. So we've got five columns that we deal with. Prior year to date, just what it says this time last year, what did we look like? Current period, which is just this month of this current period right here of November. Current year to date and our, our years on a fiscal year, so we start July one and then June thirtieth every year. So what are we doing July one? This was the mayor's proposed budget that was actually voted on. So this is the budget we are continuing to use today. This will change just by, once again, default of more revenues coming in, shifting priorities and expenses. Maybe we had an engine blow on a snowplow truck and we had to shift money that way, et cetera, and then what's getting the percent used? Okay, I'm gonna pause there. I kind of go fast. I wanna make sure that I'm not going too, too fast and I'm not going too slow. Anybody have any questions? Great. Okay, we'll just keep plugging along. Once again, now we're gonna go back to this whole general budget discussion. The budget is broken down, the first part's for the revenue. So we talked about taxes. And we've got licenses and permits, so business licenses and building permits. Intergovernmental revenues, just what it says, revenues that we receive between different government agencies. So the fire department does receive some grants, the lion's shares classy road funds, which we all pay at the, the gas pump. And then the city, city Within Hills receives a portion of those taxes based on, I don't see completed roads, or was the right word? Accepted roads. So any roads that we've accepted that a developer's put in, then we get paid per mile for those roads to maintain them. So right now, we have like fifteen or sixteen miles of roads. Corbett fills out a report every so often to let the, the state know how many roads we have. We have the Drink It Up Fund for those who drink alcohol. There's a tax put on there. Lion's share that goes to schools for school lunch, but the city does receive a little bit each year. And then the grants, we receive about a thousand dollars a year from Utah County for different little park projects that we're able to do, which is kind of nice. And we've got the actual services that the city does, like, um, if it's, if Summit Creek comes in and wants to do new subdivision or some kind of new zoning change that we do charge for that, and you can see, we originally thought it was only gonna be two thousand bucks. But so far, the share already received thirty-three thousand dollars. This pretty much is an in and out account. The city does retain a little bit of this, but this goes to cover the cost of engineering and inspections and those kinds of things. And I'll show you where that money comes out here in a second. Fire department services. When the fire department goes out and fights fires on state lands or federal lands, there's sometimes a portion of, of those hours that the firefighters spend that we can bill out to the state. And I'd say the feds, but it gets run through the state, and then the state pays us for those services, and it's all set price, pre-negotiated. We don't have any say in the rates, but it, it's pretty fair. When we had the Bald Mountain Fire, we received over a hundred thousand dollars for those two weeks. And so the firefighters got paid, some of the EMS got paid, and the city got paid for usage of the vehicles, the fire trucks. Garbage, it's in and out. We, we retain just a small portion of that for overhead. Fiber revenue, majority of this fiber revenue is people installing, and we still have installations going on right now. Once again, we had anticipated, you know, only about fifteen thousand dollars in revenues. We're already up to twenty thousand this year. That will need to be looked at and changed. The fiber, our take rate originally, Doral, correct me if I'm wrong, we were, we were anticipating thirty-five to forty percent was our break even. We're about seventy percent of the citizens and residents of Within Hills that are on it. We are doing phenomenal. We've had other cities, large and small, call us, ask us how we did it, why we did it that way, and how, any suggestions we have for them in working with Utopia?
And that's kind of a, it's kind of an unheard of take rate, so.
Miscellaneous services, park rental and people rent the park and city center, people rent the city center, small little chargers there. Interest earnings, our, most of our money is housed with the state treasurer's office. So we have two bank accounts, a Rockany Bank, and you will notice that you will receive bank statements when I send this email out to you guys, let me just see here. When I send this email out to you guys every month, you'll see that there's a November, there's a checking account and a savings account. So you'll actually see what monies are coming in and what monies are going out. We also have about another seven, eight accounts up with the state treasurer's office. So we're able to take our little amounts of money that we have here in the city of Within Hills and invest it the same way that Salt Lake City is. So they're two hundred million dollars. We can put our two million dollars in there and earn the same rates, manage through the treasurer's office. And we don't have to worry about FDIC insurances and those kinds of things, and the money is available within forty-eight hours. So if we decide we're done with that investment, that's great. We just pulled out, it's like a bank account, and we get the money in our accounts. Very successful, very phenomenal investment system, especially for smaller cities like us. We do have other options. We can get with financial advisors. We can look at, you know, it used to be the days of Merrill Lynch or some of those guys. You could look at those financial advisors and they could help you invest your money. Or such a small amount, and we wanna keep our money liquid. It's what we, the council and mayor voted in the past. So it, it's been a good working relationship with the state treasurer's office. Another little interesting that we make is, if you guys remember, if you were in the city at the time when fiber came, the city said, okay, if you sign up within a certain window of time, the city will pay for your fiber installation, or excuse me, will loan you the money for fiber installation, and you can pay us back over three years at six percent interest. This is that six percent interest. Most of this is coming, most of these accounts will be paid off here and probably in the next twelve months, and then that'll be done. We won't earn any money anymore. Miscellaneous revenue, this one, I'll have to break out a little bit. A lot of this is now dealing with COVID. Matter of fact, the majority of this money came from that most recent COVID thing that Carrie has been working on. They threw the first ninety thousand at us and then Carrie and Ted, I think, are working on trying to get the next chunk. And then Within Hills, they passed through. This used to be a bigger amount.
And Chris, just to, to remind, remind everyone that, that we designated that money for water. Our, our ARPA funds had to go for water, sewer, a couple of other things, and we, we decided to go with one hundred percent towards our water because it's a big expense right now in hopes that we get a matching grant on that.
Yeah, thank you. So great. What she's saying is that money set aside. Within Hills, they want to get pass-through in and out. Okay, then let's get into the expenses now. Expenses are broken down in general government and public safety. We'll see a few titles here, but let's, I'm gonna kind of go through quickly these few things up here. This is just basically council expenses. How much we pay the mayor, how much the council gets mayor and council get paid, how much the benefits are, this basically FICA. Any expenses, so the mayor, Brent, you've got about a thousand dollars. I don't see a slush fund. The proper terminology is discretionary, discretionary funds. So if you need to come to a conference down, you know, they have a conference sometimes in April down in St. George, those kind of things. You have a discretionary fund of a thousand dollars. City council has a discretionary fund of two thousand. Originally, that was thought, you know, if somebody wants to go have a meeting with the engineering firm, you know, just one city council member or two, then they could go have that meeting and that could come out of here. Also some travel. There's also conferences, um, the Utah Local Government Trust puts on, and some of mag, especially down in St. George in the, the spring. So those monies can be spent there. Typically, councils worked on that together. You know, they say, hey, we wanna go to St. George in April. It's approved in the council meeting. Not one council member goes, hey, I got two grand. I'm gonna go meet with the engineer for seven hours and spend most of that money. Then we got administrative salaries and wages. This amount here takes into those who work in the city offices, so myself, Jody, Marcy, and if we have anybody come in and help us some other miscellaneous things, then there's a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars that's been budgeted this year for that, and then the, the associated.
Does that count, Laurie, too?
Hopefully.
No, Laurie comes out of water. She's working for free. She just didn't say that. And then the associated benefits that, that come with those administrative costs. So that would be like if they're on the health insurance or if they get the health insurance buyout. So.
Chris?
Yes.
Do you wanna just explain that the health insurance is through the state and it's required? It's not like it's not like we can shop around for cheaper health insurance?
Okay, I'm gonna put a little correction on it. We actually have a right, see through a private insurance company, so we do not go through the state. It's too expensive.
Oh, okay.
No, that's, you, you're talking retirement. Yeah, well, yeah, we'll, we'll jump on that one. So the benefits are through IHC or Select Health. I can't remember what their name is, and they've been the least expensive. Currently only Corbett and Craig are physically on the health insurance, but those other employees that qualify, you know, they work in the requisite thirty-plus hours per week. They have the option to get on health insurance or get a fifty percent buyout. So if the rates are you know, a thousand a month, then the city would pay them five hundred dollars, win-win for the employee, win-win for the city. Now, what Dave was talking about here is retirement. So back in two thousand and six, we hired full-time employee and we need to figure out some kind of retirement. And so we went with the Utah Retirement Systems. And once you sign up with the Utah Retirement Systems, this is a state pension plan. You can never get out of it. So we're, we're always gonna be in the Utah Retirement Systems. If you work as low as twenty hours per week or more, you qualify on this plan at some level. So that's what David was talking about. We also, for the past many years, have been paying back some Utah Retirement Systems. We had an audit and the audit came in and found out that we weren't paying all the employees properly their retirement. So we just finished paying off two employees' portion of that Utah Retirement Systems, and now we're working on one more. They've been very generous, let us pay it off over five-year periods. And then we'll be all caught up in about five years, done away with, or done with all the back stuff and also keeping current. I'm gonna kind of just rattle through the rest of these really quickly. Books, supplies and subscriptions. I mean, these, it is what it says. We have, we have the big bond we took out in two thousand and thirteen for Within Hills Drive. The fire station build-out, park build-out, all sorts of stuff that comes from there. Administration travels and conferences. This is Jody or anybody in the office needs to travel that are non council members or mayor, office supplies, expenses, computer software, utilities, like, uh, the city offices and cell phones and those kind of things. So anyways, gonna kind of come down fast. Attorney, this has been kind of a hotspot. This has gone back and forth. Is it really legit attorney expenses for one family or is it for different things? Majority of these expenses are still being spent on the Fugitive lawsuit right now. Good, bad or ugly, it doesn't matter. That's what it, I mean, it does matter, but that's, that's what that money's going for, and that's what is being used. Currently, we've spent thirty-four, thirty-five thousand dollars this year, so we're, we're we're behind what we'd anticipated it would be back last April when the council voted on it. Our audit cost about nine grand a year and so forth. Any questions so far in any general or administrative expenses?
The, the other thing to note about a budget is it is a budget. Meaning, we, we put it together in basically March and April, and we're using our best guesses. So one of our philosophies, specifically when it comes to revenue, is we try to think worst-case scenario, like, okay, we know we made ninety thousand dollars in this budget category next, or last year, but do we think we're gonna do it again this year? One of the complaints of citizens, which it's a fair complaint is, but you don't end up, you end up making more than that, and the answer is, yeah, but that's a lot better than the alternative of being short. Same thing with expenses. With expenses, we often kind of look at like a three- or four-year running average. So last year, we hardly spent anything on snow. Very little snow plowing going on this year, a different story. So you can't necessarily take last year's numbers and say, that's what we're going to spend on snow plowing this next year, because then you're gonna be really, really short. And so when you're budgeting, you're trying to look at like a three-to-four-year average and, and kind of think worst-case scenario, like what's the most you've spent on snow plowing? Cause we could get one of those winters that is like that, and you don't wanna have to take the money out of savings in order to do it.
Thank you.
Chris, could you scroll up just to the bottom of that last page?
This one?
Nope, sorry, head the other way. Um, and help me one more right there, I think. And help me one more right there, I think. So we're 50 or 48% done through the month or through the fiscal cycle.
Yes.
And we've got like admin and travel conference. This is the generic question that applies to any, or even admin utilities. You know, we're at 109% expenditure or 129% expenditure. What does, what are those meaning?
So, good question. And Jody caught that the other day and this is the financials that you guys are sitting. I've made the correction. But it just by mistake and there was some waste management bills put into this portion of the utilities. And that's really what that is. There's three waste management bills at about $7,000 a piece or 21,000 bucks. And so your December financials will be corrected. That 129% will come, come down. And down below lower, you'll see that there's, there's waste on there. Now, if you look at your admin salaries and wages, we originally had thought. Early on that we would spend $126,000 this year. But if you start looking at the payroll records and seeing the overtime that we're having to pay. Not only are the employees doing their regular job, but they have, they have the lawsuit over there. That's, that they're having to do a lot of work on. And so there's significant amount of overtime being paid to keep things running within the city.
Wonderful, thank you.
Planning zoning, very, oh, question?
I was just gonna say overtime is going to be one of those things that, like for quite a while, Jody was a half-time. Or part-time person and she was really the only, well, and then we had Patty as well. But then we got Marcy and the main reason that we got Marcy was to try and minimize Jody's overtime. But as Chris has mentioned, it's still pretty significant and that's something that the council ought to be looking at is. How much overtime is being done by each person? And are there ways that we could maybe bring somebody else on or outsource that overtime or whatever?
Yeah, when I see the overtime, it worries me not as much as the payment, but as much as sanity. Are we just killing our employees because we're digging them in the ground because there's all these superfluous things going on that are taking all their time? And that's, that's really my main concern when it comes to overtime. Budget, yeah, that's important, but these people put a lot of overtime or putting a lot of hours in away from their families and away from things that they could be doing to relax. Plan Commission Chair Wayne has given up his salary. He doesn't want us, this hundred dollars a month. So. We'll, we'll reabsorb that 1,200 bucks now. Okay, please, let's talk about police. Currently, we have about two-thirds of an officer. We have been quoted in years past, if we want a full-time officer, that would take us to about 130, $130,000 a year. Currently Elk Ridge has a full-time officer. I'm not sure that that price would still stand at 130,000 because that has been several years ago. We were also told at one point that the county is subsidizing the cost of the officer a little bit out of their own coffers. So it's not so expensive for us. But not only for that 92,000 that we get us, an officer, but we get the Utah County Attorney. We get SWAT. There's a lot, there's a lot of things that come with that 92,000. So it's a pretty, pretty nice little deal for the city of Woodland Hills. Fire. So there are wages paid for the fire. Some of this goes to Craig because Craig does do fire stuff almost every single day, inspections or maintenance or anything like that. Plus, once a year, the mayor authorizes year-end bonuses for firefighters. They don't get paid during the year unless the state. Pays on some kind of fires, like Doral one year went down to Cedar City and they spent a couple of days down there. So Doral and those firefighters would have gotten paid. Those who fought the Bald Mountain Fire would have come out of here. The formula, there is a formula used for the bonuses for the firefighters and it was set up with Steve Lordson many years ago. And it's, most of the firefighters get between 700 and 1,200 dollars per year for all the, the work and trainings and midnight calls and all those kinds of things that they go on. And there are certain criteria they have to meet to be able to qualify for that. There's training, there's $12,000 for training and a chunk of that's going to be spent this week where the firefighters are coming down to St. George. And will be trained by the Utah Fire Rescue Academy, which is run through U V U. It's an excellent program. We've been participating in that about 15, 20 years.
Chris, how many, how many firefighters does that 12,000 pay for?
So.
For the year?
There's only, well, there's about 20 firefighters at various levels of certifications. There's eight coming down to St. George, so it won't take a chunk of that, but there's other trainings during the year that they use that money for.
So how much were the eight spend this week in St. George?
I've got 4,300 in, 3,300 in travel and then hotels are about 129 a night for two nights. Times eight individuals, so.
Okay.
We're about 7,000-ish.
Okay, and that's eight people? Okay.
Yeah, there's actually 12, but four have a place to stay down here, so they don't need hotels.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Same with EMS, they get a little bonus at the end of the year if you're certified. And then the supplies and just the basic EMS needs. Building inspection, this hasn't happened until the past two years or so. Corporate used to do all the inspections. We've now outsourced that to Sunrise Engineering and we'd estimate it's going to be about. $24,000 this year and it looks like we're right on, right on path for that at the moment. Animal control. We estimated about 3,000.
Hey, Chris.
Yeah.
Uh, before you leave fire and stuff. You're implying that Craig, in his daily duties, has to allocate his hours. As to what he's doing. Is, is, is that how that works? And is that accurate? Is it enough the way we, the way we do it to hit the right budgets?
Yeah, so Craig, Jody, anybody who inputs their time breaks it down like a lawyer. And they put down what they, what the hours they worked at, what they did. So specifically if corporate worked. You know, eight hours on the roads that day, he puts in eight hours of roads, but he worked four hours roads, four hours water, he puts it in that way. What Craig does inspections, he puts it in at a certain amount of inspection time for fire.
So that, that method seems to work okay. It's not a burden or it's, it's not, it's accurate enough, I guess, is my question.
I think.
In your, in your opinion?
Yes, I think the past year, year and a half, we've really gotten better payroll data because of it. I haven't heard the employees complain about it. Corbett is probably, Corbett wins the most detail. And so.
Okay.
It's, I think it's going to be a benefit in the long run, especially as more data is collected.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, then we get to roads. And as of right now, we, we had planned on $135,000 in roads with 41% of the year. We were only at 23. 24% of the budget spent. Now, a lot of the roadwork does start getting done in April. And so that, that amount could go up. We also have to look at the, a lot of the roads have been done this year when the water line was dug up. So we may not end up needing that 135,500 in there, but we don't want to start touching that until we get a better handle on what's going to happen in April, May and June. And so we just kind of go, go through these salaries here, 135 just for roadwork. 24,000 for different kinds of inspections that have to go on. Corbett still does site plan reviews. And then all the associated benefits that goes with it. There's a discretionary fund, so if they need to go out to lunch or do business. Type activities, there's $1,500 in there for them. Just miscellaneous supplies that they need to keep the, the roads up and running and a lot of that stuff is shop supplies. Tools and equipment, they usually hit that, if not a little bit more each year, just because you just never know what's going to go down and what's going to break. We do have some. Engineering costs and a lot of that's going with Jones and Demille, used to go to LEI. We have the loans for, there was a small roads loan that was taken out a couple of years ago, about 580,000 we netted. By the time fees were done, we netted about 540. So we've got principal and interest on that. And let's see what else in the exciting stuff. There's $29,000 in there for some equipment this year. And then we have budgeted for road maintenance this year, 171,600. So Corbett will go through, maybe he's already done it. And go through and figure out what the most needy parts of the city are and. Make a presentation and get that fixed. Anything you want to add to that, Corbett?
Right on.
Hey, oh, never mind. We'll get down here to the transfers.
Okay, so garbage. So we, we have a budget of expending $95,000 with waste management. And I'm going to scroll back up to the revenues. And we talked about the revenues up here of sanitation and we're, we're projecting $110,000 in revenues. So there's a little bit of, like I said, money made there. We've had a couple rate increases that we have not passed on to the citizens because we want to keep the rates on the lower side.
Does that include recycling?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And I think recycling every week has turned out to be a good thing and hasn't really increased the expense that much.
Okay.
Let's see, snowplowing, let's talk about snowplowing, especially since we're in the wintertime. This is, this is a moving. A moving target. This year. We, we, Corbett took the salt down to, to next to nothing by the fall, just so he could do some work inside of the shed. And then we had to fill it back up. And Corbett, I haven't been there for a couple of months, but did you build your little device that now you can stack the salt super high without too much trouble?
No, not yet. I've got some of the material, but I gotta do some concrete work and build a pit on the outside. That's what that. There's a capital outlay equipment. Part of that is, is the funds to do that.
Okay. So part of that 44,000 I just highlighted is for the payment on the snowplow trucks. It's divided between three accounts. It's divided between snowpalks, they use the truck for snow plowing, is divided between roads because the roads uses it and it's divided between water. So one-third of the payment comes from each one of those. And so the rest of that, which I can't remember, I think it's about 20,000. $24,000 their Corbett has to make this salt stacking system. So we can get lots more salt in that salt shed. If you've never been down there, you gotta go look and see how, how much salt can be held, held in that thing. And just some of the mechanisms he has to load it into the back of the trucks. It's kind of cool.
Hey, one other thing, Chris.
Yes.
Just another general financial principle. A lot of our expenditures are divided between two or three different accounts. The most common are roads and water. Because you almost can't do any road work without doing water work and vice versa. And so, you know, when we buy equipment, we may buy a truck. But then what we do is we divide the cost of that truck between different accounts depending upon how it's going to be used. So you can't think of like a $70,000 truck as just coming out of the, the, the general budget. It's gen, it's generally, that's terrible. Anyway, it's most often going to come out of at least three different accounts. And divided equally between them.
Yep, thank you. Okay, parks, very. Interesting budgets, because now we've got a park, wreck and trail committee. They're starting to do more with the park. We've increased some of the line items, like for example, the 21,500 that we budgeted this year for different items that can be done within the park. I know they're talking about putting a fence in and some of those kinds of things. I think those expenses were, were pretty. They, they kept those costs pretty low, so they might have some extra funds if the council wants to look, cut loose with it and let them be able to spend it on something else.
So Chris, is, is chipping still combined with that? If it is, that 20, that 20 grand is for our portion of the payment. For chipping, if we, if we, if we, if we continue chipping, we had to guarantee 20 grand. It would be our payment portion potentially.
Then that, that's what that is. Then if we have to guarantee that portion of it, then that's, that's what.
That's why, that's why Craig put that in the budget.
Okay. And Chipping's been a successful program in the city. Yes. Okay, Dave, you want, do you want to talk about these?
Yeah, so transfers. So let, can you go back up to? The part where you show how much we're pulling out of savings in order to balance our budget. Okay, so you see here that we're, we're pulling $277,000 out of savings in order to balance our budget. And again, you know, that might give you some pause and go, what? The city's running at a huge deficit. But now, now go down to these transfers. So what these transfers are basically all about is putting money into savings. And so with our, what we decided to do, because. Different mayors have gone back and forth on this. Okay, one mayor wanted everything just in one big pot. Another mayor had it divided into very, very detailed different pots. We tried to kind of find a middle ground. And realizing that fire, snowplow, roads and water are, you know, the basic services that we provide as a city. We, we set up these savings accounts and for each one of them. And so you see for fire, we're putting $50,000 in there. EMS, $4,000. So each one of these has the purpose. So the fire one is for the replacement of our fire truck. And if we figure if we put $50,000 for the next two years, then we'll basically have, have enough money. For that fire truck. It's not perfectly right. It, it's close. Anyway, EMS, that's for the, a future new ambulance. And EMS. Stuff, snow plowing. For the most part, that $5,000 is meant to save for future snowplow trucks. So the current trucks we got, Chris already mentioned, they're on lease. It, that's a five-year lease, Chris, or a four-year?
I think we went 48 months.
Okay, so four-year, four-year lease. With an option to buy afterwards. We'll see, you know, we'll see how well they hold up and all that other kind of stuff. But the objective would be that we would save enough money so that we could replace those trucks. On some kind of rotating basis. I'm not exactly sure what the roads money is for. Let me explain a little bit behind roads. So when I first got on the council, we really, really struggled with roads. For the most part, we could do about $100,000 a year worth of work. On roads, so you know, pick your spot. Pick your length. Corbett's really good at coming up with how much, how much it's going to cost per linear foot. And you got $100,000, you know, do the math and that's how much road you got each year. The problem is, is that we really struggled. I think many of you will remember how we could only get roadwork done in like October. And the reason is because these companies, they've got bigger projects to do during the summer. And they'd rather, they'd rather take a $5 million project than a $100,000 project. So what we decided to do, and this was like two years ago, I think. And again, part of the reason was because interest rates were so incredibly low that money was cheap. A lot of, a lot of people took out loans and a lot of cities did too. And so we were able to take out a, a larger loan. That was the $580,000. And we basically dedicated five years worth of our road money in one year. And because we did that, we were able to get contractors that would come up here and all of a sudden we were interesting to them and worth doing the job. But what that also means is we don't get to spend very much road money for the next four year or three years or whatever it is now. And that's just because that's how we chose to do it. So anyway, those are some of the transfers.
And these, keep, keep these five lines in mind, because you're going to see them here in just a second when we move down to the next couple of pages. One of the things that, that these are doing, this is a placeholder. These obviously, you know, we say about your trucks, four years of $5,000, it's only 20 grand, that will barely put a down payment. But the thought and object was, is it, it's on the mind now of everybody. We should look at increasing those from year to year. And being able to save, you know, yes, we'll have to lease trucks again the next time it comes around, but maybe at the time after that. We might look at some different creative financing. So far the trucks, I think it's worked out in our benefit to have them leased. Some of the warranties that are on them and that kind of stuff have come toward, come to our benefit. So always remember those five lines here in just a second because you're going to see them again. This is where they're coming out of. I'm going to show you where they're going and. So that is the end of general fund, Fund 10. And we're going to jump down to what's called the Capital Projects Funds. And within the Capital Projects Fund, there's six different accounts. And the first count is just kind of a general capital projects fund. We haven't used this for years. We do keep it set up. Well, like, you know, I need, I need to back up a second. The general fund has a certain tolerance of, of revenues you can carry over from year to year. Since we are considered a city now, not a town, we can only carry over three to 18, that keep changing, 18% right now of our revenues. If we carry over more.
No, it's 25% now. They changed it.
Good, um so three to twenty-five percent. If we carry over more than twenty-five percent, we get an audit finding and we get a little slap on the hand that says you saved too much money. The reason they do that, I think one of the main reasons they do that is so we're not overtaxing people and just building up the coffers of the city. Um so we need to be careful on that. Many years went on, eight years at least, savings was, was being. Um was building up to pay for the fiber. Um we have not had that finding in a while. Matter of fact, we haven't hardly had any findings in our audits for years, which is, which is a true testament. To the management of the city, to everybody that's participating. Anyways, so the capital project, we really don't use this particular account right now with this fund, but we keep it in there just. Just in case and it's, it's a, the state has us have it in there also. The next one's capital projects fire. Okay, so we have to take the money. Out of the account we were just looking at, out of the general account, and we can put it into a capital project. So it's out of the other one into here. Because we can only save three to twenty-five percent if we kept the fire savings or the EMS savings or. The snow plowing savings. If we kept all those in the general account, then that would throw us over the twenty-five percent we. And we would be out of compliance. So that's where all these are going. They're just kind of sitting there, but I paused for a second because the next one coming up is um roads. And the roads is an active capital projects that we use right now. There's a roads committee that Paul McCarthy used to sit on and I can't remember who's sitting on it now, but this is. Kind of some of the budget that they've been working on. Um I'm gonna come back here in just a second. Okay. So. Um to do, to do, to do.
But let me, let me do it while you're, while you're finding uh your place there, Chris.
Yeah.
So what Chris is saying is by moving, moving money out of our operational account into these other accounts. Since they're a capital project account, I believe we can actually, we can save more than twenty-five percent in a capital. In fact, I don't think there's a limit on a capital project account.
Correct.
But the, this, the opposite or the other side of that coin is. That it's dedicated to that purpose. So our fire is dedicated to. Uh spending that money on fire and EMS same way, uh roads, et cetera. So you can't just. I mean, you, you can't just put it in those accounts and then, you know, sp- spend it on a big banquet or, or whatever, you know, it's. It's kind of dedicating it. And one of the things that we've tried to do over the last couple of years. Um. Is try to add a layer of transparency. So again, that's why we have these five different accounts. And we just put money in each one of them and then it's pretty clear what it's going to be spent on.
Thank you. Um this, this count, I need to look into this a little bit more because there used to be things like. We had to fix a, a residence driveway. We had spring drive, we were looking at doing that spring drive. Road was really bad, but then that got incorporated into the, the loan. So I'll look into this capital projects and see why those aren't showing, but there should be three or four different line items there. Um and I'll get back with you on that one. Let's, let's jump down to parks. Once again, it's just the savings. It's out of the general into parks account. And then we're gonna get into operation or enterprise. Once again, like Dave just said, the capital projects can save money. And the enterprise can save money and actually make, make additional revenues. So right now we have. Most of the revenues are within the um. Uh just water user rates. So you can see it's forty-one percent of the year's gone by, we're already at forty-eight percent. So we're gonna need to make some adjustments. Probably we'll look at that pretty heavily in the spring. Water doesn't really start getting turned on until about May. So we might want to adjust this up just a little bit and then, and. I'll be making recommendations. The mayor will be making recommendations and then we'll take it to the finance committee for them to vet out and then bring it to the city council. And then you guys have the ultimate say because this is your budget, you vote on it. So the water account, just. Um. Pretty self-sufficient. We've done really good over the years. This is gonna be out of balance because we have a lot of revenue coming in from the state for our water line repair. We didn't know at the time when this budget was done that they were gonna give us an additional amount of money for basically interest-free again. But this is everything that goes into the expenses of the water account. Here's the savings we talked about. We anticipate. Putting in a hundred and ten thousand dollars. We're trying to save for the depreciation of the um system. So every year we get a depreciation schedule. I go over that, look how much money is projected to depreciate and that's what we put away in savings. When we went and got original loan for the well at the top of Rod Hollow. Um the state was very happy that we'd been putting money away. They said, many cities don't fund their depreciation. If we could fund our depreciation in the general account. That would be awesome too, which we're kind of doing by those new capital projects accounts. So water account is looking super good. We had to raise water rates. A couple of years ago because of the department, DDW wanted to raise water rates so we could. Get these big loans, the three, five million dollar loans to be able to pay them back. They're giving us a year to, to put some money into our savings account to make those loan payments. We have not had any major loan payments on those. Recent ones we got for all the water repair that you see going on in Oak and Spring and just Maple and all over the city.
And can I make a comment about the water fund? The water fund is one of those that um every city council member and mayor look at and they go, wow, we have a lot of money there. Oh. The problem is your pipes only last forty years. And when you replace your pipes, you generally have to tear up the road and do a lot of road repair too. So yes, at times it will look like the water fund has a lot of money in it. But it's also that depreciation that Chris is talking about and we, we know we're gonna have to spend it too. So. Please don't look at the water account and think you can spend like a sailor there.
One thing that I.
Well, and the other thing is that water has to pay for water. And so. Over the course of, of the next forty years, hopefully we have the, the, you know, ten or. Twenty million that'll take to replace the water system again. So we do have to be cautious of, of making sure we put in enough and. And then that, that's protected for water use only.
Thank you. One thing. The council needs to look at, and that is an impact fee study. We have not done one on the water system. In years, I, I believe we would even be considered out of compliance. Since we've been with Payson. Um and the sewer, I think they've had at least two impact fees and they've lowered their rates. Um I would recommend that the city council authorized very soon. Ted Mickelson's company, Jones and DeMille, to look at impact fee structure for the water. For roads, for sewer potentially, I'm not, excuse me, my back office, patient at the sewer, parks, EMS. Fire, just anything that, that are legally impact fees. So this, so use the council and the mayor can decide, okay, that seems like a worthwhile thing. Let's get an impact because we know we're gonna have to replace a fire truck in ten years. We know we're gonna have to get another park or we're gonna have to upgrade the park. Not saying you have to get the impact fees once the study's done, but at least. You can have it in your, your tool belt to know, hey, we should look at his impact fees. Regardless, we need to do a water impact fee. That, that just needs to be done. We need to take a look at our, our well, our future system. Um these impact fees do cost a lot of money. However, they, the expenses can be rolled into the impact fee. So if it costs eighty thousand dollars in an impact fee. Then that money can be rolled in and collected from future citizens. And then we got the sewer account and this is mainly in and out. Money comes in, goes right out to Payson, covers the sewer expenses for the Thousand Oaks and Summer Creek area. Um sewer is going up about a year, year and a half. Always talking to them. They anticipate their rates at that time, we're gonna go to at least a hundred and twenty dollars per resident per month. Now, and that's not just the city of Woodland Hills. But that was during the, the presidential administration that was looking at the, the EPA effects of the sewer and the gases. I'm not quite sure where Payson stands now, you know, as government changes in Washington, so do environmental laws and rules. So. Just be prepared to know that any rate increases come from Payson City, not from the city of Woodland Hills. So that is the super high fifty thousand foot level of the budget. We do have a yearly audit. For the auditors, this year we had four auditors come in. They spent three days just in, in the city and then they spent several weeks going through our books. Line by line, piece by piece, to make sure teaser crossed, eyes are dotted. Um they look for fraud, they look for so many different avenues. We had what's called a single audit this year. Which meant we had to have an additional audit because we received more than seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal loans. Um that was a good thing to, or excuse me, federal grants. That was a good thing to have. But I was a little sad. I was, was caught on the street by a resident of Woodland Hills. A couple of weeks ago, indicating how mismanaged the city is, how much fraud there is within the city. How me personally as the director of finance, how the recorder were hiding money that the auditors can't find. Um it's out there and it, and you know, you think you have intelligent people out there and it's, it's sad to hear their lack of intelligence come out. Um many eyes are on these books. Anytime you guys need anything, you wanna open up the book, you want me to give you a password, you wanna log in. Whatever, it's yours. You guys see all the visa statements, the visa credit cards? You guys see all the bank statements? Um I don't give you guys the PTIF statements. That's so locked down, it can only be. It's at the state and I can only transfer money into the city of Woodland Hills Bank account, just trying to cut down on paperwork. Um you do see the balances on the, the balance sheets. Um i- it's just been really, it's been really run well for many years and it's, and you can see. We're able to get loans, we're able to pay things off. Um yeah, water's expensive, but. Wasn't installed right the first time. And some of the water pipes were thirty, thirty-five, forty, even older than that, so.
Well, and I, I, I'm gonna make a comment about our finances. Um. All of our employees do a really good job of being frugal. Um Corbett can invent more things to save money than I have time to even think about. You know, Jody is really, really frugal. Um Chris has done a really good job. This, it, it frustrates me too, but again, you know, it was election season, right? So the, the easy. Way to get elected is to proclaim that the city's run amok and you're gonna bring sanity to this insane asylum. And but the facts don't back that up at all. Um the city has actually been run very, very well. Um there was a rumor going around, one of the candidates was casting that the city was gonna go bankrupt. And I honestly had to laugh at that, you know, because there's like seriously no way that we can go bankrupt. The state won't let us. Um and since all of our retirement is actually being paid upfront. We don't have to worry about, you know, if we get four employees that pull retirement at the same time, that's not coming out of our coffers, that's coming out of the state. And that's the most common reason for cities to go bankrupt is their pension plans. So anyway, it's. W- once you actually understand how things are run and how, how the budget is done, you'll, you'll be able to see very clearly that. Um. That we're, that we, we're not going bankrupt. I will make one other comment. In one of the very first trainings that I went to as a city council person. Um this uh person got up and made this comment. She said, I can always tell a city's priorities by looking at their budget. And if you look at our budget. I hope what you will see is that our priorities are fire, water, snow plowing. Um roads. And then I'm gonna throw in another one and that's people. Um I think it's important that we treat our employees fairly. Um we haven't always done that and I think we need to do. Um what we can to treat them fairly. So I think, I think it's pretty easy to see where we spend our, our budget and what our priorities are.
Thank you.
I, I like that comment, Dave. Um Chris, if I could ask kind of a. We, I have seen occasion where the council votes to approve expenditure of an amount greater than X. Um can you, can you explain what those X values are, you know? Uh when do we have to get permission or, or approval from someone else to, to spend? Uh the money and, and I assume that's even money that's in our budgets, you know, that we still need to get approval. If it's over five grand or two grand or whatever the money is, amount is, can you clear that up?
Absolutely. So right now Corbett and Craig have an authorization for five hundred dollars without comment of the council, specifically if it is budgeted. Now there are specific line items that Corbett asked for, for example, the salt stacking machine. I'm gonna throw it up fifteen thousand bucks. I can't remember exactly what it was. That specific line item was already approved. Corbett's got the approval, he can go spend that money. Um but on the individual basis, the finance director can do fifteen hundred. The mayor can do ten thousand. After ten thousand, then it needs to go to council. Once we reach a fifty thousand dollar threshold, then we need to look at an RFP or an RFI, something. Uh more formal through the state of Utah unless we go through what's called the, the purchasing or the um. Um. We, it's the purchasing website, but it's called um, it's, it's contracts that the state of Utah purchasing department have already pre-negotiated. Um so if we wanted to say we needed some track homework, it's gonna be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Normally, we would have to go out to a bid on that. However, they were on the state contract is what it's called. They're on state contract. We do not have to go to bid because the state's already pre-negotiated those rates for us. Anything we do on large expenses, we try to stay with state contract if at all possible. Roads are really hard, asphalt, those numbers are changing all the time. It'd be crazy for some company like Geneva Rock to go in there and say, okay, we'll give it to you. For the state contract price in August and, and hope to have that same price in April. It just doesn't work. But office supplies, um computers, software. Furniture, those kind of things. We can use state contract. Is that, was that what you were looking for, girl? You're on mute.
Oh, yeah, also, um that did Chris answer. Also, I understand there are multiple signatures on each check. I mean, there's, there's all kinds of accounting. Thresholds, I think, or accounting rules that we must follow and we do follow.
Yep, very, very good point. So in the past about twelve months, we've even tightened it up even more. So we do have two check signers on the account. Um and it's, it's a. Uh we just changed him. So it's Jody and I think Marcy, the mayor and the mayor pro temp. That will be the signers on the checking accounts. Then Corbett, Craig. Jody and the mayor have a credit card, not this mayor, Brent hasn't received it yet, but Wendy had a credit card. And then um when we do payroll, payroll's all done online. So I create the payroll record. Jody uploads it and either Marcy or Lori approve it. So we've got three people just in there. We're trying to mitigate fraud as best we can. Because Lori and I both have access to the bank account. We both do reconciliation. There's a lot of fraud that can happen. Between the time it's reconciled and the time money's spent. That's, that's where we could. Have some fraud, but because we've got multiple people in that account looking at it and reconciling with two people actually reconcile the, the bank accounts. That just puts an extra layer of eyes. That is probably overkill and in, in some people's eyes. I, I feel it's just a safeguard protects me, protects Lori, protects you as the council, protects Jody.
In, in all the years I've watched the finances being handled in our city, it's really, really wonderful not to have to worry about. Uh what we're not watching. And so seeing, seeing the rules being followed and, and seeing our good audits that we're, we're getting. Uh that are looking at us, those are all valuable things. And anyway, I, I. I, I just think it's, it's handled really well over many years I've watched.
Well, and we've, we've made a lot of changes and uh this happened even before I, I was on the council. A- again, as our city has grown up, we've had to make some changes and um, you know, we, we went from. Uh basically doing um purchase order invoices for every expense, which was crazy. To having a shared credit card, to then having a state supplied purchasing cards. So processes have changed over the years and um and we're getting better. And as you look at this and it. If there's things that we can continue to do better, then, then we're all game for that.
Part of your emails every month will have the actual credit card statements. You also see a check register of all the monies that go out of the check, checking account that particular month. This check register here just shows the checks that went out. It will not tie into the bank account because some people don't cash your checks right away. So we may write a check in November and they don't cash it till December or January. Anyways, but at least you can see the monies that are going out of the city. And where they're going and what they're for. We have a budget meeting coming up here in a couple of weeks. Um I don't know what the focus or. We have a budget meeting coming up here in a couple of weeks. Um, I don't know what the focus or plan. Mayor, what you want to have happen there? Do you want you and I to have the budget? Ready for the finance committee to look at and then present to the council or is this budget meeting? Everybody's come with their ideas. And then the mayor takes it. We work together, decipher it and put a budget together based off of that.
Well, I actually um don't have that fleshed out. Um, so maybe you and I can talk about some of the. Strategies for that particular meeting, Chris, and then pass that information along, but I don't have a specific plan right now.
Excellent.
I do think it is helpful to have the mayor's plan prior to our budget retreat so that we kind of have an. An idea of what the thoughts are from the administrative side of the budget. Because otherwise we'd have to have a second budget retreat to go over all those numbers individually. So.
I think that was kind of the idea, right? Uh, to to come sort of ready with numbers and and proposals for that budget retreat.
To that point, Carrie, um, it's important to know that. The proposed budget could also and rightfully would be called the mayor's budget. In other words, the mayor is the one who's responsible for putting together the budget. Now, our previous mayor was really good about bringing everybody together and having everybody kind of be able to say. I think we should do this. I think we should do that. Um, the department heads are also responsible for putting together. Their departmental budgets, which then roll up into the main budget. But then it is the mayor's job to kind of. Massage that, massage the numbers and then propose a budget to the council. And then the council either approves or rejects it or talks about it or whatever. But that's that's kind of the path that the budget is supposed to flow through.
And one other thing we're gonna need to look at and it's a sticky widget, but it's called the truth and taxation hearing. Are. Is there a need to raise property taxes this coming up year? Is there a need to take a look at what inflation has done and keep the the tax rate level? Meaning, we keep it the same percentage as it is this year, each year, and we can get in a whole other subject really quickly. Property taxes, as property tax value, as properties values go up, the property tax rate drops down, meaning.
We get less money.
We technically it's supposed to be roughly about the same amount of money. But there were some studies done recently in in the Rhodes group that that Rhodes, you know, inflation may have only been two percent. But asphalt and things were up twenty-five percent. So we have to kind of weigh those those options out. In a minimum, I I think it's been a good practice to at least keep the certified tax rate level, meaning, yes, everybody gets a little property tax increase. But we're not coming back and asking for huge hits, or we're not surprising people by not having tax rate increase for three years and all of a sudden. Next year they got a huge rate increase and now they're they're fit to be tied.
I think it's important to note that that what you just said is um inflationary costs um go up. Um, acco- accordingly and and as a city, we don't get an automatic increase for inflation. Or or any of anything else. And so it's it's our duty too is to to look at those numbers. And to make sure that we're providing the services that our residents want, which may include a. You know, there might be an increase in asphalt cost. There might be an increase in the salt that we use in snow plowing. There could be other increases that are beyond our control. But just to maintain the status quo, we might need to adjust that rate accordingly.
And did what Chris just say makes sense to everybody? I mean. How the certified tax rate, if property taxes go up, the certified tax rate goes down. I mean, that's kind of an important principle, so I want to make sure everybody gets that.
They talk about it in the uh uh Utah League of City and Towns training, so. Uh, I know that Janet and I got a little bit of a overview on that.
Yeah, it's 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 the primary reason that we've had truth and taxation hearings the last two years. Is because we're a growing city. Now, just because we're a growing city doesn't need, we doesn't mean we need a lot more money. That's not what I'm trying to say at all. But by us holding the certified tax rate level, we do get more dollars. But it's also the only way that we're able to capture the fact that we've got more homes and more property taxes. So when you take a field and build a home on it, it all of a sudden has more value. Well, that value then gets put into the county's equation and that makes our certified tax rate go down. Because we're always going to get just the same number of dollars roughly. So by us holding the certified tax rate even, we do get more dollars. But our residents, at least as far as a percentage of their house in general, don't have to pay a ton more in taxes.
Thanks, uh, Chris and and everyone else uh for your participation. Anybody have any other comments? If not, uh. I think that we can probably move to close this meeting.
I I do, mayor.
Yeah, Corbett, please.
What one of the things that we need to consider, um, what is that rate? One of one of the things that we need to consider is is again with taxes and tax rates, basically you get the same amount of money. You do the same amount of work or you do the same work that you do from year to year. Well, when that changes. Then all it does is puts a greater burden on what money you have if you don't increase the money to do the extra work. Now, that being said, there was a home, I don't know if if everybody realizes, but there was a home down on Loaf or on Woodland Hills Drive that got flooded. The water that came down Woodland Hills Drive came through the field. Came across the roundabout, down into the field and then down along Woodland Hills Drive until it until it crossed Woodland Hills Drive. And flooded a basement. Well, nobody ever really cares until something happens. Well, that that water came off of a county road and so the resident, they filed suit against Utah County. Utah County comes back and says, whoa, wait a minute, that's not our water. That came from above. It just came down Woodland Hills Drive. And so. The county starts looking at everybody else to try to shovel that responsibility off. What that's done is made us realize that. As development takes place in Salem below us, where all of our stormwater used to run and didn't bother anybody. Now it's bothering people. And if we don't do something about it, we're responsible. Um, and so you'll see in this next agenda for city council meeting, a proposal from the Rhodes Committee to. To do a study, a stormwater study, and that study needs to identify the issues that are that are. Already there. They've just never affected anybody. And now when you have all that that construction going on. Below us, um, north and west of the roundabout, I don't know if you're if you remember or not, but for a while they had some equipment. Right along Woodland Hills Drive. They were installing storm drain. To pick up the water that was coming under Woodland Hills Drive from the fields and from Woodland Hill City. Um, it's a big issue and it's gonna, it's never gonna go away. And so it's something that we're gonna have to, we're going going to have to address. In Spanish Fork, we have a storm drain fee on our utility bill and it's twelve bucks a month. And and that all that storm drain fee does is covers maintenance of the storm drain system. You can't install new stuff with a maintenance fee. That comes from an impact fee or a bond. But we're gonna have an issue that we're gonna have to take care of it, especially as that development takes place on the on on north of our city. Um, and so just be aware that we need to look at a way to to fund that work that needs to be done. If we don't have a way to fund it, it's gonna just come out of general fund, which means we get less done that we've usually done. For the same amount of money. So everybody just needs to be aware that that's, it's not gonna go away and it's gonna get worse before it gets better.
Good point. Thank you, Corbett. Anyone else? All right, uh, well, uh, thanks to everyone. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn this?
No, moved.
All right.
I second that. And I appreciate appreciate Chris doing this for us and Dave, you helping too.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, meeting adjourned and yeah, thanks, everybody. Thanks, especially Chris.
Well, thank you guys for listening. Fun stuff.
Yes, I only have one question. Since you're building a house down in San.